All right, let's see if we can get up. Back up? All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. It's now 2:00 PM. We're here for our special session in Hunt County Commissioners Court. This time I'll call the meeting to order. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Smith, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting. We have no minutes. Public testimony speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Do we have any? Anybody wish to speak? Being none, I'll close the public testimony. Go to new business, nothing on the consent calendar. We took care of all of the action items under B. For the approval payroll, payroll personnel amendments, transfers, payables, all done this morning, so we've got nothing new. Yeah. All right, number one, fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Commissioners, we're here today to hear from some departments. I think we got four of them here today, five actually. Two, two of you speaking, I think, kind of simultaneous between JP and Constable. So we're going, I'm going to start with the Health Department and ask Rodney to come make his presentation to the court of his needs and...
Good afternoon.
Hold that mic down. There you go.
Good, better? Good afternoon?
Yeah, that's better.
Thank you for your time and the opportunity to talk with y'all this afternoon. I met with Judge Stovall a couple of weeks ago and put this letter together requesting an additional environmental health inspector, a registered sanitarian. I believe you all have a copy of that? I have extra copies if we need it. I mean, we're requesting this, this additional person to inspect food establishment, public and semi-public pools, spas, and splash pads and conduct rabies investigations. Now, we currently have a position open, my position, as I just assumed role of director a couple of months ago now. So we have not fill my position yet, but this position is in addition to, to that position. Once, if this position is approved and is filled, we would have actually two inspectors for septic and two inspectors for food, which is something that we really need in the county. And if we're going down to look at, take a look at the table right now, and this is fluid, we have about 243 food establishments. We have some open, some closed. That's a good number of the, just food establishments. And I broke out the schools. There's 32 schools. That also includes Commerce, East Texas A&amp;M, as part of that, those schools. Mobile units were somewhere around 80, and then swimming pools, 26. And again, there's, we found a few new ones since, in the last couple of years. But so, in the, if you look on the right column there, so for 243 food establishments, really, there's two inspections required per year. That's the minimum, and so that's, takes you to the 486 number. And if you add those up, taking out the swimming pools, and we're just talking about, really talking about food, 710 inspections a year, which is required. And that's required by, I call it TEEFER, the Texas Food Establishment Rules and Regulations, far as required number, and also our grant that pays a lot of the salary for, for one health inspector. That's a requirement as far as the number of inspections as well, is required there. So to meet these requirements, we do need an additional person, a registered sanitarian. So also, part of the sanitarian position is also rabies investigations. So in '24, we had 64 cases reported. We know that's just a, we know there's more out there, but this is what was reported to us. But we're already in track this year. We've already got 38 this year, so we're going to probably surpass last year's number of rabies reports where we have to investigate and quarantine or get the animal quarantined or whatever needs to be done to, to make sure that the animals doesn't transmit rabies. So I kind of moved down and took at some bullet points, and I was kind of looking a little bit at the future. So counting up around 15 food establishments that are currently in planning or under construction. I know in Quineland right now, there's a majority of these are in Quineland. You know, we have a new Starbucks coming to Quineland. There's, at the Car Wash there on 34 and Main Street, there's going to be a convenience store in there, and I believe it's Taco Casa coming in there. And then down on Quineland Parkway, back to the right there before you get to 751, they've got like a two-story building that's going to have multiple things in it. We, we, we think at this point like four or five food establishments there. And in Commerce, I know that we've got the Rodeo Renta going on. There'll be food establishments there. And I know that we have a new place going in downtown Commerce. So this is continual, these new places coming in. As the county continues to grow, we have more places come in. And these new places, they require a lot of work before they even get open. Multiple inspections, we have to go out and make sure that they're on track. Even with the schools, I was in Lone Oak yesterday, the new school in Lone Oak. They require, you know, multiple inspections to make sure they got everything correct. So this projected growth is going to generate at least, after they're open, would 30 positions, I mean, 30 inspections, excuse me, about 30 and more additional inspections on top of the, the 710 that I'm talking about here. Also right now, and I didn't say too much about the swimming pools, right now, we're really getting a pre-opening inspection. We're not doing the second round of inspections on the pools. The pools are very time-consuming as well, multiple inspections to get things right. We go out, we fail them, we give them a list, and then they say, hey, we're ready. We go back out and hopefully they're ready at that point. Sometimes they're not. I'm, I'm going back to one tomorrow in Commerce. I think this is the third trip for it. So looking at it, typically the goal for one inspector is about 40 inspections a month. Now, you know, included with all the inspections is all the emails, the phone calls, the mobile food units. I would have to say that 20% of my calls are about mobile food. That's the hot thing right now. It's been for such a long time. And there's a lot of changing, a lot of discussions about what's going on with the mobile food program. But, so in addition to the, this 40 inspections, if you're just doing inspections, but there's a lot more involved than just inspections going to that place. And another factor too is we have, the, the county, the traffic is, it just seems like it takes forever to get from one side or the other. And if we have something going on in Commerce and you got to go to West Wockney, it's a, there's a lot of windshield time in there. So one of the differences, when I talk to the inspector here in Greenville, you know, most of her inspections are up and down Wesley Street. They're not in multiple towns, and so it's easy to zip from here to there. And I didn't really even talk about the number of complaints. You know, knock on wood, our complaints are not too bad, but we do have complaints as well, and we respond to those. And that's, can be really time-consuming as well. I was out at a place yesterday. We received a complaint about something. I smelled gas when I was in there, and anyway, we made the appropriate phone calls and it did have, they had a gas leak, and so we closed them for that. And so they're back open now. But one thing sometimes leads to other things. And sometimes we go out there and there's a septic issue that we have to address as well. So my first year here, I think I had a record number of closures. And when we say closures, we're saying there's something going on that's got to be corrected before they can open back up. So when we say 40 inspections, 40, that's, that's just regular inspections. I mean, there's a lot other things that are involved with that as well. But I believe this, a second position, that would give us plenty of room for growth for quite some time, and it would allow us to meet all the required number of inspections and get us in a lot better shape.
So Rodney, when you, when you go back to the beginning, when you were talking about your current workload, so are you still working as an inspector as well as your director job?
I'm doing some, yes.
You're doing some?
Yes, I'm, yes, we have to right now, there's just so much going on.
So the, the count that you had there, that was the 710, I think, was the, the total number?
Yes, sir.
That's what's actually happening, not forecast, right?
That is, that is correct. That's what should be done. I'm not saying that we meet those right now completely.
So my question, that's kind of where I was going. How close are you to keeping up with doing two inspections a year? Are you...
We're behind. We are behind. Yes, sir.
Behind five, five a year, five a month?
When I look back, I was a little bit less than the 480 when I looked at my own schedule or my own list from last year, but then I had to account, I was out for medical leave for a little while there too. But, so I was just short of that. But that's typical goal that even the state, far as their inspectors, is, is that 40 a month.
So if you were to backfill you completely, do you still need the other one to keep up, just to keep up with what you have today?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
So you, you still have to replace yourself, correct?
Correct, correct.
So if you get yourself replaced?
Yes.
You still need the other one?
Yes.
Or are you preparing for the future with it?
We still, Gary, you still got the schools, the mobile units, and the swimming pools that are on top of the 486. So one person would replace the, the 480, you're right, it could replace that, but then you throw in the others and then you don't have that. And...
Now, on the food, the swimming pools and all that, you service everything except the city limits of Greenville?
That's correct.
So every other city, rural county and all that, you guys service?
Inside of Hunt County, yes, sir. That's correct.
Which includes stores that serve food and stuff like that?
Absolutely. So a food establishment, maybe I should explain a little bit of that. Food establishment can be a Dollar General, it can be a CVS, it can be a McDonald's, it can be, you know, Country Club, anybody who's serving food to the public. So I didn't break it down in cities, how many per city, but I know Commerce is my largest number of city as far as restaurants, followed close, then Quineland is real close as well, and followed by Cattle Meals is trying to, is kind of moving up too. I didn't mention Cattle, but Cattle has at least two that I know of in work right now.
So on the swimming pools, those are only commercial pools, correct?
Absolutely. Just commercial.
No, no...
No residential?
No residential, okay.
And these are splash pads as well as spas, and we've got a couple of splash pads out there, actually more than a couple. We're about, there's about four splash pads, but most of them are commercial pools, some of them are combination.
Okay. So on, on fees, are, the state set our fee price or do we set our fee prices or...
I believe it's set by the Commissioners Court.
By the Commissioners Court.
And it was, there was a slight increase right before I got here, so in '22, I guess, '21.
Well, Commissioners, we, we budgeted a little over $423,000 in revenue for this year, and his budget is almost six, or last year was almost, or this current year is $690,000, but we have a grant on top of that. And Mary, you know off the top of your head, what, is that grant? How much is the grant, you remember?
The, the grant, we looked at that, was covering 70-something percent?
Of a, of a salary?
Yes, yes. I believe that was correct.
So it's like a $50,000 grant or something?
It was, um... It was somewhere in there, yes.
Thank you. So we're, that's right, at $500,000 that we have estimated for revenue. So we're about $190,000 this year in the hole of breaking even as far as where we're at, and if we add another position, that'll be on top of that, unless we look at addressing some fee structures to, kind of like it was this morning. Do we, people getting, getting the benefit of the service? Do they need to be paying for the service instead of the taxpayers picking up that bill? So...
Yeah, I know there's some, there's some areas that we could certainly look at far as increasing fees in certain areas, especially reinspection fees. That's one thing we don't have really built in is...
We don't, we don't charge anything for a reinspection.
Right, right. So it's, they don't, they're not penalized. If, if we go out to their swimming pool and it's not right, we give them a list and say it's failed, well, they fix it, we go back, it doesn't, you know...
Doesn't always, what do other counties or cities, whatever, charge for go-backs? Are they normally charged or not?
There is, yeah, there, sometimes you get one free one, and then after that, they charge for, for some of them. And I know that we do, uh, charge for, for some of our septic reinspections, for not for food or pools.
Have you looked at the other counties around us and see what they're charging for fees? Are we involved in park with them or...
I, I have not done a study on the other counties as far as their fees for food establishments. Some of the cities, I know that we may be just slightly lower than some of the, some of the cities, but I'm not sure about some of the counties.
You know, like if Greenville charges a, a go-back fee or whatever, you don't...
I, I don't... I don't know that Greenville does have a reinspection fee, but I'll have to check on that.
Okay.
Rodney, I know, like you're saying, I know we got the counties growing, that's a given.
Right, right.
And I understand it's, it's always you prefer more people or whatever. If we focus on just getting your position, somebody backing that and hold off on hiring someone new, what damage is that going to cause us? What problems are that? I mean, if we try to budget and get it on to next year?
Well, the reason, you know, I'm here today is, you know, I'm, this position wouldn't even be in effect till October, is my understanding. This, if this is approved for this position, it doesn't start till October. And, you know, I hope we can fill my position before then. So it, at the, we've had my position posted for two months, at least two months, and we haven't got not a single applicant that, that meets qualifications yet.
Is that because we're not getting qualified applicants because of the price?
That's, I think that that has, that's part of it, but I don't, I'm not going to, I can't say that that's all of it, but that's certainly part of it. So...
So your, your backfill would be focused on food for the most part?
Yes, yes.
And, and the new hire would be focused on food or septic, the other, the added?
We have two septic really right now. We want, we need, we need two food. So Brittany is working some food. She's learning some of the food ropes and how to do some of that.
She's the only other one certified to do it?
She's the only other sanitarian we have, registered sanitarian.
Right.
Josh is a DR as well.
The judge was talking about fees, one of the things that was popped up to me, if I'm reading this wrong, by all means tell me this is your financial page, right?
Yes, sir.
So when I, when I go look at it, you need to add bodies in the food, and I get it, there's lots of things being added in the county, but the money comes from the septic side.
Absolutely. Well, our office is 75 to 80% septic, for sure.
But I don't, but I don't need increased support on the septic side, I need increased support on the food side.
At this point, that's where we need the, we need the assistance.
Which doesn't generate as much money back to the, to the fee standpoint.
Right.
The most activity is, creates the least amount of revenue for the county.
I don't know how you compare those. I mean, there's a whole different, those are two different inspections, but yeah, I know, yeah, my people, yeah. I got you.
We, you know, when I came to the county, this is, your first time I've been paired with septic, you know, other cities, when I, I worked for cities before, not counties. But when I worked for, say, the city, I worked for the city of Rowlett for a number of years, and we, we were paired with code enforcement. I've been, when I was working for the city of Allen, I was, the health was paired with planning department. So it's just kind of, they get paired with some, some other department, so...
So do you get the benefit on the food side from the revenue on septic?
Uh, as far as...
Well, it's just revenue.
It's just revenue, you know, it's, yeah.
Thinking about it, but, but, okay. But certainly your manpower goes to the food side.
Right, and, you know, and I really, one of my goals is to have us a little more cross-straining. I'm also a DR as well for septic, but I obtained that license after I started work here, but I've been, since I've been here, I've been neck-deep in food, actually more than neck-deep in food, and not really have a chance to learn the septic side as much as I would like.
Is the septic activity, is that mostly new build, new activity that you're doing and inspecting, or is it following up with existing?
Um, it's, there's a lot of new residential and commercials are on the rise, lots and lots of new commercial permits coming in. So it's, and there's a, we receive a lot of complaints, and there's a lot of investigations from the septic side as well.
There's a reasonable investigation, most of them around Wockney, right?
I don't, I won't comment.
We are live streaming, you know?
Rodney, just to make sure I understand...
Wash your mouth, though.
All this understanding of the public, explain to me the, the county's obligations with, to provide these food establishment inspections. Are we obligated to provide them in city, city limits, or is that something we've chosen to provide? How does that work?
So like the city of Greenville, they have their own health department. So they take care of everything within the city limits. We're just tasked with outside of the city, city limits of Greenville.
Okay.
Other cities aren't big enough probably to have their own.
So the inspections are required by state?
Right, right.
Okay.
So in the, in the absence, so in the absence of a food inspector like, like Greenville has, but employed by city, it falls to the county to provide those inspections?
Correct. We have some places, you know, desolate places, well, I say desolate, but they'll, they, very small populations in some places, they are done by the state actually. So the state would do some of those inspections.
Talking about counties, very partially...
Yes, yes, yes. Uh, you know, the region of North Texas that's run by the state, they, they have, their inspectors may have two, three counties that they inspect.
Commissioners, you, y'all have any problem with me working with Rodney? And let's see if we can come up with a game plan and look at our fee schedule against other counties around and see if there's any room, maybe that we could raise some revenue a little bit and then try to see if, if, you know, first of all, we need to get this other person on board. So we, we need to address that now, not next year's budget. We're going to have to address that in, in a future Commissioners Court meeting about what we want to do about that position. But see if we can come up with a way to get our, our, this budget kind of balanced a little better with, with more revenue.
I would feel better about the increase in the hit count if, if the revenue...
Right. Let's, can, give us a little time, are we open to that? And see if we can come up with a game plan and then try to accomplish it all.
I think that'd be good to look at.
Is that okay? All right, so we'll get together later, later in the week or, and try to get something worked out, see if we can do a little research and figure it out.
Sounds great.
Okay? Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you.
You got anything else, or is it...
That was, unless you wanted to mention the, the ZipRecruiter with some of the job, the salaries and things that was listed.
Why don't we work with Sandy on that? And then we, so we can come back with a recommendation, if that's all right, we'll get Sandy involved in that and see if we can kind of figure out a recommendation maybe to raise the salary up, see if we can get somebody hired.
Sounds great.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney.
All right. Nobe, I think you're next.
Judge Stovall, Commissioners, good to see everybody and thank y'all for giving us the opportunity to, to come before you here today. We, I had a chance to visit with Judge Stovall a few weeks ago, excuse me, a little bit about presenting to the Commissioners Court our need for a couple of additional, additional ADAs, a couple of additional assistance. I think it's going to be consistent with what y'all have heard and what you're probably going to hear, that we're all experiencing the growth, you know, that we are, we are experiencing. We, we are quite a bit in the DA's office, in that we have a number of, well, all the agencies that prosecute, or file felony cases that we have to prosecute are all coming through the DA's office. And Judge, if you don't mind, Mr. Lilly, First Assistant, put together a little bit of a presentation. I didn't want to go too far into some of the specifics of it, if that's okay.
That's fine, that's perfect.
Commissioners and Judge Stovall have a handout that I can provide ahead of time. I can, my lovely assistant can give it to you, I guess.
He said it's lovely assistant to hand out.
Thanks, sir.
For those of you who I haven't met or don't know, my name is Steve Lilly, and I'm the First Assistant District Attorney for Nobe Walker here in Hunt County, and I want to thank you all for the opportunity to, to talk to y'all about some of the needs that we have at the DA's office that have been kind of growing over time. And it, we are here today because we need more prosecutors. We need two new prosecutors. And there are several reasons for that, and I want to go into them. The first page is something that, of our little presentation is not going to be news to anybody here, and that is, is that we've, of course, grown a whole lot over the last 10 years or so. But the most important thing for us is, as a DA's office, is in 2015 is when we last added an attorney to the office. And since then, the county has grown about 30 to 33% since then. And the rule of thumb, or whatever you want to call it, that I say, that's an entire city of Greenville that we've added since we last added a prosecutor to our office, and that's a lot. And the workload has increased over time, and not only that, but the types of cases, well, the types of cases are the same, but the data and the information that we get from law enforcement agencies has only increased over the last 10 years. The digital evidence and things like that takes longer for our prosecutors to review and to prepare for trials and things like that. So I wanted to give a little perspective. Page two does talk about some of the additional personnel that have been added specifically to our, our sheriff's office, the law enforcement side. I see that they're, they're here today, but they have had...
They're here begging too.
That's right. They have had an increase in the law enforcement side, and this is the only side that I looked at, since we last added a prosecutor, of about 25 to 30%, which is on par with the county's growth. And I know that they're going to tell you, and I can agree with them, that, that they need more personnel as well. But just as a comparison, we haven't added anybody since then, and we need it, because not only has the sheriff's office expanded as it needs to, but so have the other, some of the other agencies, obviously Greenville has, and I believe Commerce has as well. And so we are at the same number that we were at total staff-wise and attorney-wise since 2015.
So I apologize for interrupting you.
Yes. No, that's okay, I'm used to it.
But as you, as you say that, is your case count gone up as well? Do you have data that says, hey, we used to do 10, now we do 40?
Well, that's what the, the next page kind of talks about, and that is, yes, that is true. With, the case count has gone up. It does fluctuate from year to year, and because COVID still wasn't that long ago, when I look back, there was a drop and then a huge jump after we got out of COVID. And so it was hard to kind of average it out. But we are expecting this year, and I looked at it again last week, if, if we keep our averages, which I assume we, we had a good sample size this calendar year so far, we're going to get 1,200 felony cases alone from law enforcement agencies filed with us, and...
And that's all agencies in the county?
All agencies, yeah. 25, about 25 or more agencies file cases with us. And, you know, probably about 40 to 50 personnel, about 40% of them are from the sheriff's office, and a whole lot of them are from Greenville, and then the rest of them file fewer, but...
DPS file cases?
Yes, absolutely. Drugs, inner, well, drug cases on the interstate, DPS, if there's a felony DWI, things like that, you know, we get a lot of those cases as well. They're probably the third biggest filer with us after Greenville and Hunt County Sheriff's Office. So the way that we are organized right now because of the staffing we have is that all 1,200 felony cases get reviewed by one person, and right now, that's me. And that's a lot of cases. And those cases, after they are reviewed by me, and I took that position on not that long ago, but once they are reviewed and analyzed by myself and some with, with Mr. Walker, they get presented to grand jury. And so there is really one person who is filtering and reviewing and responsible for 1,200 cases. And then those cases get dispersed amongst the prosecutors in the trial courts. We have two of them, Judge Aiken and Judge Bench's courts. And they're doing a lot of the hard work as well. Where the, the need most acutely is the intake side. My responsibilities as the First Assistant are to help with anything that, that our office needs, with what Mr. Walker needs, what the community needs. I'm a liaison with law enforcement as well as, I hope they would attest to. because those, the types of meetings I'm talking about are on top of these 1,200 cases that we're getting. The meetings we try and have, the trainings we try and help with, the other projects that we have to work on, there is just, um, it's just very tough to get to them and it has been for some time. And so, uh, basically in my little diagram here is that it's, it's a full-time plus position, just to do the intake alone, uh, is, is incredibly challenging. We're talking murder, drug cases all the way up to capital murder cases that have to get reviewed. So, um, that is what that person is doing, that is what is challenging right now for me or for anybody in this position. So the fourth page is asking for what we're asking for and that is, there's something at the bottom there that I want to talk, touch on just briefly, but we, we need, what we're asking for are two more attorneys to assist in any number of possible ways depending on the candidates that we get and how it would be structured, but we need somebody to assist with the intake, which is the accepting of cases and approving of them. And we also need another, a second one as well to assist with overall trial responsibilities. And, and that can be structured any number of ways. We've talked about that in a few different contexts, depends on some other factors and like I said, the experience, uh, and knowledge that somebody would bring to the table, but bringing two new attorneys on board would, would be a very important thing. We also wanted to talk about, and this is just briefly here, is that currently our victims assistance coordinator, which we just added last year, is grant funded. And we believe it would be important in really the next budget year, but certainly soon, to make that commitment to become part of what the, the county funds in our victims assistance coordinator. Uh, she's done a tremendous job, because our trial attorneys are so taxed in a lot of ways, she's done a tremendous job relieving some of that responsibility of being the liaison of our office with victims of crime. And, and we just can't, um, tell you how much it, she has done for our office. And, uh, we really want to make that commitment to that position, not necessarily to her, but, but that, although we want her to stay, but, um, that position we believe needs to be gra, um, taken off of the grant funds soon and really made a part of the commitment that our county can make.
Well, that brings up another question.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Since you've already used up all your grant funding with attorney fees and that victim assistance and now you're wanting two others.
Right.
That really SB 22 was for was to help and aid in that. You've already burned it up. How, how are you gonna mend that back in? Are you gonna take money away from those that's already been given, uh, part of that SB 22 money or are you expecting the taxpayers to pick up the bill for all of that? And in particularly, I mean, the victim's assistant was clearly when, was asked for and all it was to be paid for by SB 22 and that was just last year.
Yes, you're, yes, yes, absolutely. And, uh, we understand that and we do want to have that position funded by the taxpayers because we think it's important eventually. It's something that I wanted to bring to the court's attention. And, um, if it did, of course, that SB 22 money would be, could be used in other ways. We haven't had any plans on what to do with that at this point, but.
Well, how you want to justify, are you talking about bringing in two people and then paying them the same thing we're paying the current attorneys with their bumps with SB 22 money? I mean, you're, you're gonna put a pretty good price tag on it or you're gonna have attorneys making way differential in pay.
They, that's true. Uh, we don't, we're not asking, what we're asking for, I believe at this point, is that they be funded at the level that the attorneys are funded by the county right now. And that may not make us as competitive as we want to be, but I had not intended to ask for the county to fund new attorneys at the level that us that already work there are being funded at with the grant funds, if that makes sense. I, I wasn't intending to ask for that.
Well, you're gonna have some morale problems in your office.
Well, these are new people, so.
Yeah, spend on their experience and their qualifications.
Right, exactly.
And what a caseload they're carrying, if they come in and carry the same caseload as everybody else and they're making $30,000 less than the rest of them.
Well, we want to make sure that.
It's gonna be a problem.
Yes, absolutely. We want to make sure that we're competitive. One of the ways that could happen frankly is that if the victims assistance coordinator was funded by the county. If that's not an option, we will, we will figure it out. We will make it work.
Why would, why would we want to fund that whenever the state's paying for the grant funded position now?
Why would we want to fund it? We think, well, because we don't know if it's gonna last forever, for one thing. It's a, it's a good question, Commissioner. We don't know if it's gonna be forever. Right now, it's, it's for the next bi, bi, biennial or, or, I can't remember the word there, but we know it's funded through the next two years. We think it's important because it says a lot about where our office is headed and the importance that we put on that position. It's something that is just very critical for, uh, for our community and so we want to do that. We, we want to do that eventually. And, um, I, I don't want to get too much into the weeds on that, um, unless of course we have more questions about it, but I do think it's something that, that should be considered as an option and something that we could, we could consider doing.
It's a pretty big ask when, you know, when you look at, y'all got $250,000 in raises across the department last year with SB 22.
Yes, yeah.
And now coming in with two new people.
Yes.
And, uh, it's, it's hard, how do you justify all that?
Well.
And how you ma, how do we make that work? You're gonna ask the taxpayers to fund two more positions that, you know, maybe if the money was just temporary or somehow handled with SB 22, I don't remember all the details of how SB 22 was written, but.
Right.
It's, it's, and then ask us to take over also the victim's assistant coordinator position, that's a.
Well, and I, and I, again, I don't want to necessarily focus too much on that.
And I know y'all need more people. I mean, I, I get it, we're growing, I get it, but how do we, how do we maneuver this? Cause we've almost got ourselves in a box with the, with the raises given and SB 22 almost has hurt us in this situation.
Well, it certainly had its complications.
It has complicated issues.
And I, I would say that a couple of things in that regard is, uh, in order for our county to stay competitive and hire the right people, I think we did make the right decisions we did with the, with the SB 22 money, Judge Stovall, what we did last year. Uh, I think it was the right move and I still do. And, uh, so for that reason, I, I think that it's, we like what we did with it. Now, as far as how do we justify, I think we justify by saying a few things. One of them is, is that we are understaffed and we need more people to help serve our community and serve law enforcement. Uh, there are a lot of phone calls that I can't return in a timely manner that I really, really need to and want to and, and I, I'm trying, but there's just a lot of things that I'm not being able to get to right now. This is just me personally and, um, it's not a good feeling. And, and I want to be able to look law enforcement in the eye and look some of our community members, victims, witnesses and things like that and tell them we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're getting to your case in a timely manner and that we are prosecuting it to the best of our ability. And I think that adding new positions is the, the method that we can use to do that because the, you know, adding more salary to somebody is nice. I like getting more salary, but I, I don't get any more hours in the day. Uh, and so, um, that's the only way we get more work hours in the day is by adding another employee or two. And that's why I think it's so important. But it is a good question and I understand the, the financial impacts and, and everything and, and as I've said before, sometimes the state grant money has complications with it and, and everything that nobody anticipates or, and some people do and, uh, we, some of us don't listen as much as we should sometimes.
Well, then your other problem is, is, you know, space. Y'all are already out of space, add two more. If, if the court was to decide to do that, we're gonna have to figure out how, you know, how and when y'all are gonna change your office, whether or not we go. I mean, hopefully we're supposed to be getting full control of the third floor pretty soon. You know, we've had to hold over by workforce, mix up with cog and Texas workforce, so, but I've been told they're, they've got another space and they're leaving. So soon as they get out, then we gotta start talking about, and Nobie, are two more people gonna be able to go to there? I mean, you gonna have space?
Well, what, what we've looked at is when you come in through the front door, y'all are familiar with the DA's offices, you walk in, we have the reception, we have another desk that's right.
Get closer to the mic, make sure everybody.
Another desk that's right beside that, that's right now is, is empty, you know, for some of the support staff. And then frankly, it would be moving on, you know, heading further east into the office where that copy machine is, that we'd wind up having to move and put another desk there right before you get into Judge Linden's office through that back door. So that long, that long entryway that we have, it looks like that we could have with the receptionist and two more desks. Now, it's, it's, it's wide open, you know what I mean? And I don't know if we might could do something with petitions, but we could certainly get three work spaces in there and like I said, move some of the administrative folks up to the front and if we wound up with the two new attorneys, we would put them back in those offices.
So where's the victim's assistant now, coordinator?
She's in an office there at the far end, down towards the restroom, heading back down at the other end.
So they'll still have an office? Cause they, before they were sharing the office or something with the conference room or something before.
And that's one of the offices that we, we need to keep for that victim's assistance coordinator.
Okay.
We would leave her there and like I said, we've got, uh, Lori Creed is doing our plea papers now. She's, or, or along those lines, she could move up there. And we also have Cassidy T. Lon that's doing the intake when law enforcement files her cases, we could put her, her up there as well. Uh, so both of those, we, we could make it. It would be cramped, it would be pretty, pretty tough, but we'd make it work until the, uh, the old bank building becomes available if it does.
Right. So if, if, would it be workable if we were able to come up with one position that started maybe later, thinking about the move and all that? If we budgeted one position for, say nine months out of the year or some period of time, so get you moved and then bring a person on and then look at adding another one the following year, if that makes our budget work better? Is that, was that?
Judge, frankly, we're, we will, any assistance that you guys can provide us, we'll certainly, and we're, we're more than willing to work with you as we need to.
Okay.
I, I did want to kind of drop this, kind of put this out there as well. Some of you may, uh, be aware of or have some knowledge of the attempts that have been going on lately, uh, for a sexual assault task force, right? Probably, we're really looking at, with our kids for the most part. Uh, as that's been envisioned and Judge Bench has been working a, a lot on it and I really haven't spoken with him at length about it in a few weeks, uh, but I know that's still in, in play, that's still in the works and.
I talked to him last week about it.
Well, yes, sir. And let's, and let's hope that, that we can make that, that we can make that happen. But if, if we do, I know the plan was to have a dedicated prosecutor, uh, to that task force. Uh, there's certainly enough work coming in.
So is that one of these two you were thinking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if, if we find out where that is, we could time that with, whenever that could happen maybe?
Yes, sir. That is, uh, there's gonna be a real need for that. If we get this off the ground, we just absolutely are not in a position to pull, as matter, as we're standing here now, you know, Katie McVandy, she's in trial, she's been in there, Elijah, I believe in the 354th will be going next week. The, the guys that are, the trial attorneys that are in there, they are non-stop. You know what I mean? They are non-stop and we really thought it would be better for, if that gets off the ground, right, to have someone dedicated to it rather than just throw it in the mix of the frontline prosecutors that just get to it when they can. So I did want to mention that as well.
And Gary, do you have another question?
And at the risk of going down the rabbit trail, so I apologize for that, but just curiosity, uh, for the last two or three courts, I've, I've just made note on the, the sheriff's information, he's, he's over 325 beds populated every, every, every week for nine weeks in a row now.
Yep.
Four weeks over 330. And so I'm, I'm, I'm curious, if you have this extra head count, does it start to relieve that problem? Is there a direct relationship?
There's not really a direct relationship. We, um, I get those numbers about every other, every third day of the jail population. Sheriff's Department has been really good. We, we've worked together in terms of trying to, uh, if there's anyone sitting over in that jail that we can get these cases moved on, not sell them out, but you know, properly get them moved on, then we certainly do. We, we do everything we can if some that come across, if there's, you know, possibly bond conditions could be changed or this, that or the other, but it's not, um, it wouldn't help us per se, other than we've just got more people that are aware of the problem and that's that many more cases that we might could move along a little quicker.
But indirect relationship, but not a direct.
Right. And I think I might be able to speak to that a little bit more, a little bit as well. Commissioner Smith is that, uh, when people are in the jail, those are the ones we know about and those are the ones that we can help with as many, as way, as many ways as we can. What, what I try and do and what the prosecutors try and do and what I need to be doing more of, I feel, is assisting law enforcement on those cases they're investigating where somebody has not been arrested yet. Those sexual assault of a child cases, those other, um, really serious cases where we can help with that, um, and assist in a lot of ways that, that I think the increased manpower will definitely help with. Those are, as much as the people that are in the jail, there's that other side that the public doesn't see as much of because those people have not been arrested yet. And so that's a lot of what this, um, that is a big portion of responsibility that needs to be increased, uh, I think by some increased manpower and hours. I did want to say, uh, the last page of my little presentation, if you haven't already seen it yet, um, it does show you a few semi-comparable counties in population size and what felony prosecutors they have. Sometimes it's hard to parse these numbers out. These are four counties, ours is right in the middle, uh, that I can narrow down how many felony prosecutors they have. Um, from Henderson County and Angelina County, which have fewer people than us considerably, they have six felony prosecutors. We have five. Uh, and then Wichita County, Wichita Falls and Rockwall, um, they have a little bit more, but not that many anymore as far as population goes. They have quite a few more prosecutors even than that.
Would you add Bastrop and, uh, Liberty?
I looked at both of those, Judge, and, um, and I could not, uh, from their county budgets, I could not parse out only felony prosecutors. Because they don't always line item it out like some of them do.
Right.
And so I, I didn't have the opportunity to go look at those numbers.
They're the two closest counties to.
Yes.
Match us. I mean, we're near the same size.
Right.
We're adjacent to major metropolitan areas.
Yes.
I mean, it's, it's, we really fit.
Right.
Very, very similar to those two counties.
Absolutely. And I tried to find those numbers out. I could still get those numbers, I just, they weren't as readily available, the public information online as.
If you get a chance, that'd probably be good information.
Right, absolutely. I can look into that.
So just curious, with, with the, with the added head count, as I, as I look at the rest of your budget, I don't really see correlation of things going up other than, you know, a pre-trial intervention stipend. So everything stays flat otherwise, even though you're adding, you know, if you were adding one or two people?
Uh, other line items in the budget, uh, there may be a slight increase in, in, um, there may be an increase in licenses we have to get from Axon, which is the company that we have our, our evidence storage through, there'd be an increase there. I don't, I don't know how much that would be, it wouldn't be a lot.
I think that's being paid out of network services.
It might be.
Yeah, I don't think it's in y'all's budget.
Okay, well, that's good.
I'm shaking her head, yes.
Okay, good, okay, thank you. Um, I mean, no, I, not that I'm anticipating a major amount, I mean, you know, not really.
Steve, on the 1,200 felony cases that you said that you kind of look over, is, and you're wanting a prosecutor to help look over those as well to kind of relieve you from that duty?
Yes.
Does it take an attorney to do that?
Yes, it does. Uh, and, um, you know, I think in the past, maybe we've relied on other people to do it, maybe investigators in decades past. Yes, it does, because we have to be the ones to determine whether or not all the elements of the offense are met. We have to be the ones to draft the indictment and, um, and all that sort of stuff. There's just really no other way to do it. I wish that there was. But actual reading the case and, and deciding what to charge somebody with really has to be our, our responsibility.
Steve, I know the county's grown in different things, we all know that.
Yes.
And, uh, you're saying on the sheet here, it's gotten, uh, 2016, you had 12 employees and we're still the same today.
Yes.
And you're saying that we got 1,200 felony cases.
Yes.
And you're saying on the sheet here, 2016, you had 12 employees and we're still the same today?
Yes.
And you're saying that we got 1,200 felony cases?
Yes.
Do you know how many cases we were doing back in 2016?
I don't have that number with me right now. The, the farthest back that I could go through Tyler Odyssey system, because we changed, I think, in 2017 or 18.
I wasn't here.
I, I was just trying to remember. It was under 1,000. I know that. But it was probably around 900 to 1,000.
So we went up about 300 cases in eight years?
Yeah, about, which is again, about 30%, maybe 20, 25%, 30%.
Do you know what last year was?
It was less than 12. It was over 1,000. I think it was right around 1,100 last year. It was not up to 1,200. It was a little more than 1,000.
What are you through this year? Because you're fixing to be nine months, three quarters through the year, so.
Yeah, I looked at it from the calendar year, because of when grand jury starts. And then that's when I started doing this.
So you don't do budget year, you do calendar year?
But the 1,200 is, I took the number of cases we had so far a week and a half ago. And then did the, did the math and it came up to 1,200. And I've checked it about once a week and it's staying at that rate. So I think that's a pretty safe.
That's fine, as long as you're consistent throughout all of it.
Right. Yes. Waited to see how many it was going to be.
Yeah, that's fine.
Steve, I had several questions, but most of them have already been asked. Because counties all do things differently and fund at different levels, I suspect the answer is no, but I'll ask anyway. Is there a standard, say, industry standard ratio of population to number of prosecutors? Like, do you need to have one prosecutor for every 25,000 population? Just, I'm just making up numbers, but you get my point?
Yes, I do. And you're right. My answer is no. I don't know. I did actually try and figure out, there is no good data on how many assistant prosecutors there are in this state. There is no, nobody keeps that number. So I can't really tell you what the number is, even statewide. I wish I could. I actually asked ChatGPT to help me with that question and did not, did not assist.
What about Grok? Did you try Grok?
Well, it can't be good information.
I know, right? I don't know. And I wish I did, because that would be a great argument. I think we would still have a good argument here, but I don't know what the answer is.
And then back to SB 22, we have this victim support position. And is that, to remind me and inform the public, is that fully SB 22 funded?
We used about a third of the money to fund that position, including the county's portion of FICA and health insurance and retirement and everything, yes.
And the rest was distributed across multiple positions in the office for?
Yes.
Just for the attorneys, wasn't it?
Well, investigator and attorneys, yes. You can use it for investigators, attorneys, and victims assistance coordinators. We didn't have one to give any more money to, so we created a position.
And so we, we're for sure going to have that, that SB 22 money for the next two, three years?
This year plus the next two years?
Yeah, or this year.
But because it's a grant, there is a potential that it could go away. And so that, which is motivating your, your desire to move that into the, away from, from grant funding, just to ensure it goes.
Absolutely.
But, but if, if it were to, the grant were to go away, we would probably have some had, some, so heads up and know it was coming and could fund it at that time.
Well, then we got, now we're going to have attorneys being paid more than what the county's been paying. And we're, that's going to be another one of those dilemmas if they, if they take away that funding.
And that's the dilemma we face, is we don't want to be so reliant on it that if it were to go away, it causes huge problems. So my, my thing is maybe there's some value to having it concentrated in a smaller number of positions, so that there would be fewer impacted if, if the grant were to go away.
That is one way to do it. And all of us that received SB 22 money also, Commissioner Hutchins, we understand that it may not be there forever. I mean, you know, we've all, we've all talked to each other about that. We know. We know that, that that's a possibility. But, but that is a way to lessen the impact perhaps, yes.
Additionally, you know, we're not, we have not been given any percent increase to them because of SB 22. And I've been asked a few times, but both, both, I think the DA and CA office both, you know, since they're not getting the increment raises that everybody else is getting, if SB 22 goes away and we don't do something, then we're going, we're going to have to cover some costs to catch up what they're missing now. So we're creating a, the state could cause us a real headache down the road if they stop that funding.
It's a growing liability.
Yes, it is. Potential liability.
Potential, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's growing.
It is.
Get your mic. There's nobody here. I'm sorry. We need to do it the right way.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
The SB 22 compliance says through this audit that all of them must get a raise. They cannot be denied the Hunt County raise or will have a compliance issue. They're verifying that they are not getting a reduction in pay and that they're getting the same benefits as the rest of the county. And that's coming right off the compliance reports that we are submitting now.
Okay. Good to know.
Well, everyone, thank you. Unless there's other questions. I think that we've said what we needed to say. We thank you for the opportunity. We hope to get these new positions in the very near future.
Thank y'all.
You need to have Nobi take you out to lunch since you had to stand up here and get thrown at you.
He had to do a whole bunch then.
You owe him a lot, then. Do lunches.
I'm going on vacation tomorrow, so that's how I'm getting back at him, I guess. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
All right.
All right. JP 2, Constable 2, y'all coming together or separately? How y'all? Y'all, I know y'all got a similar problem. Y'all, y'all got a mutual problem. Or ask, I guess maybe is the right thing to say. A mutual ask.
A mutual ask, right.
Yeah.
Thank y'all for having us here today. We're here to discuss the, the possibility of getting a second clerk in the JP 2 court. A kind of a breakdown of what we've got now, the current staffing. There's one full-time court clerk in the JP court. We have a full-time person that's part-time with me and part-time with, with the constable. And we have a part-time that's paid from constable's budget, but is assigned to the court. So we have actually two and a half people right now. Currently, we've had our longtime civil clerk has retired, so that's left us without one. So what we're asking is to have another clerk added full-time, to have two court clerks and one constable clerk. But have them all three trained, that they can do any job in, in our building, whether it's civil, criminal, or constable. The reason we're asking for that is we're seeing an increase in, in most of our cases that we hear. Our criminal offenses are, are going up 84% based on last year's numbers. Evictions are 50% more. Debt claims are 22% more. And then our small claims have gone up 48%. So we're seeing a lot more cases coming in this year versus last year. And one thing that we're able to do now with the staffing that we did have before the retirement is doing more show cause hearings. And that gets more compliance and more collections. And we're also seeing collections each month going up this year with the personnel that we've got. And I think we could do better with another full-time clerk. And the money that we're asking for is not for a, the entire amount. We're only asking for $40,034.73. And that's because there's 17,546 already boasted in Constable Benson's budget for the part-time person.
So we're increasing a half of positions, really, or we're increasing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And the savings from what our new full-time clerk's going to start at, the one that's fixing to take over from Mr. Driggers, is we're saving $7,700 from there. And basically, we're just paying half of that and then the benefits. So that's what we're asking for, is to, to get another clerk there to help us out with what we've got going on there.
So Judge, what, you said you're asking for $40,000 for that, for the positions, all you're asking for then?
That's the difference between, yeah.
The difference?
Difference from what we've got now and what we would need for benefits and the other half of the salary.
So then Michael's budget will go up to cover, you've had a full-time position?
No, I've got a half and a half.
Okay.
So I want to combine my two halves.
To one. Okay. Half and half makes one, that's right.
There'll be three, three full-time people there.
Okay.
But we're going to have one.
So but, one budget in Constable, two in the JP?
And two JP, but they're all three going to be cross-trained to do, yeah.
No part-time?
Yeah.
So that math, Sandy, that? Okay. So it's a little over $40,000 ask to fill that position?
Approximately $40,000.
Yeah, about $40,000.
Yes, sir.
Three, three full-time, instead of whatever the mix was. Two part-timers and two full-time.
We'll have a three full-time that can.
That feels like a shell game.
Right. But that'll get us three full-time people in our building that can do anything, be cross-trained for anything that, that comes in.
Okay. What are y'all doing for the rest of this year? You just, you'll just have the one position replaced that's retiring? You, you're going to fill that spot and everything else stays the same for the rest of your, okay?
Our part-time lady that, that's working, Amanda Suarez, is going to move up on July the 21st to full-time on.
Taking this vacancy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, was she? Okay, good, good.
Are you, are you going to be short help now?
Sure, a part-time.
Part-time? Yeah, half a time. Okay. Until new budget year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Making sure I understood it all.
Yeah, it's kind of confusing, but.
Back to the Gary Shell game, we're eating pieces around.
I tried to write it down in that letter as best I could to explain it, so it wasn't too confusing.
So the bottom line number for both of your requests, all combined, is $40,000?
$40,000, yes, sir. Give or take a little bit.
So it's not really changing the Constable's budget, just changing yours, right?
Well, it would take the money.
Because he's got two part-time. Him? Under you, so, okay.
Shell game.
So you're going to have one full-time, and then you're going to have?
Sandy figured that out and gave it to him, so.
Right, right, right.
We need someone to draw this out.
Well, get, get us a sheet of it when you can, yeah, so we can understand it.
Shouldn't be surprised. You two make it difficult.
Yeah.
And everything else is fairly the same budget-wise?
Yes, sir.
The other categories?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right. Did we, we save the best for last, I guess? Sheriff, Buddy, Shelby, whoever's going.
I'm bringing back a piece count.
He's old and slow like I am. He's. Oh, now we're bringing the real brains up here.
That's what scares me. It's, you, you've heard it. Thank, and thank y'all for listening, taking the time. But, you know, we're going to go over growth of the county. We're going to go over how many calls. You know, I think calls for service this year from July, or from June to June was And that's just part of it. That, that's not all. That's, we still have, it comes in the lobby and things like that.
Do you have a breakdown on what kind of calls those are? Just curious.
No, we, we, we take it all.
Well, I know you do, but I didn't know, I didn't know if y'all broke them down to have a matrix of what you're.
No, we, you know, it's, it, you know, we, we, we put up everybody's cows to barking dogs to, you know, family violence. And they brought it up, the, you know, crimes against children. And we're, we've seen, I think, I feel like we've seen an increase in that. And the work in them offenses is, is really time-consuming. Thanks to the courts and, and everything, we, we've got, we're able to dump technology. But with that comes manpower doing that. You're going to, we got one of our investigators that, he, he can't investigate offenses because all he's doing is working on cell phones and iPads. And to get information off of these court cases. And, you know, we talked about how many people's in our jail. We do have a lot of people in our jail, but don't be confused. If you're arrested for criminal trespass here in town, because you went to Walmart twice and you just criminal trespassed off of it. These people, we're trying to get them to get them out and get them some help and things like that. But also don't be confused with the fact of that if you are a predator here in Hunt County, your butt will be in my jail. It's going to be that way, and I'm going to do my best to keep you there until I can put you in the penitentiary. And we, we have, with the growth, we have the growth of bad people that comes in. And we're going to continue to enforce the law and do that. Right now, what I'm looking at is I'm asking for four more officers for patrol and one more investigator. Four more officers, each one covers, helps cover a shift. We're running them, we run up to, we try to keep six people on a shift, which is thin. I bet we, that's trying to.
What's a shift? Is it 12 hours or what is it?
Yes, sir, 12 hours. Most time, we're running four to five. That's 900 square miles, okay? I know, we want to talk about growth. As anybody drove around and happened to seen the mobile own parks, the travel trailer parks, we're answering calls at all of them. And I wished I had thought and brought the guy, because I know he came and spoke, disturbance. We had a disturbance the other night. Off and then, and finally, he found the spot and the person called in and said, you know, your officer just drove right down there and right in the middle of this party by himself with nobody. I said, he didn't have anybody. We don't have a choice. The other night, it's Saturday night, I answered a call by myself at County Road 2440. And Commissioner, you know where that is?
Kaufman County.
Right at the Kaufman County line, and I was by myself on a party. This is what we're dealing with. We're just trying to get, trying to slowly move up to get enough officers to where not only can these guys take a break, get rest, but they've got backup there. We've got at least maybe two officers that can respond to these places. Because, and, and two, responding to a pasture party is not enough as it is. But what we're trying to do is keep our officers safe and keep the public safe. And it's just taking, it's taking money and it's taking people. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a taxpayer too.
So you're taking two and two, two each shift? Is that what the four is?
No, no.
Are you doing four, just one of the shifts?
Yeah, they, they rotate, so it's just one, one per shift. We've got, we've got, we've got four shifts.
Okay, got you.
You know, they got, got an A and B days and, you know, same nights. And then the investigator is to try to keep up with that. And our investigators are bombed with cases.
So every shift, we should have five now?
Yeah, our, yeah, we should. We, we, no, we'd like to have five. Yeah, we would have seven. We'd like to have, but getting, getting everybody in. We also got one, we got a, a school officer on one of the mental health deals that we discussed that we're going to move from that to Wolf City School. As of right now, looks like we're going to get all three rural schools.
You're just using that budgeted position?
Yes, we're using that to move over. To be, to try to, we're getting Wolf City School covered. We'll have all the schools covered at this, at this point with a deputy in Bowles, a deputy in Campbell, and a deputy in Wolf City. And we're trying to get this done. But, you know, like I said, I hate to stand up here and discuss money. I know times are tough, but it's tough out here, okay?
Are we talking four cars, four outfits?
We're going to have to be, we're going to have to have officers outfitted, yes, sir.
And cars, and radios?
Cars, vests, the whole span. I mean, it is what it is.
Terry, how's the vacancy these days for you guys? Were y'all?
We're slowly, we're slowly moving up. I mean, we're slowly filling positions. It's, it, you know, thanks, thanks to the, the raises, we're competitive, we're close. We're close enough that we are getting people in. I mean, we still, you know, you still have turnover to a certain point.
Sure, but obviously, if you've got, you know, 10 vacancies and you're asking for, you know, four more people, it's not going to do you any good.
Yeah. No, we don't have 10, 10 vacancies. I think right now, are we, we full?
We've got two in training. After that, we would be full, correct? On patrol? On patrol, yes.
Yeah, we got two, we got two that's fixing, that's in training that should come out. And then that'll, that'll put us full on patrol.
What about jail? We fulling the jail or staying pretty full?
We're staying pretty, are pretty well-staffed in the jail. We're, we're, we're doing good.
So our, our salary range is staying, holding pretty good with everybody else?
We're, we're holding close. We're holding close. I mean, you know, we got, the, we are going to ask for salary increases, but these are, it's part of a plan. You know, I've slowly moved up with the, with the deputies, you know, the jail and this, that, and other. We have the, the brains of the outfit, the ladies all up front, down that front. We're, you know, we're, we're asking for a slight raise for them. But, you know, we, we've got to have, we've got to have the guys feet on the street for safety purposes. It is what it is.
Sheriff, in your, in your budget, have you, as far as the cost of adding one, one deputy? Have, have, is that dominoed throughout the rest of it, the number of rounds they got to practice, equipment, cars? That's all, that's all?
Yeah, your proficiency and everything. You know, I've got, I'm, we're blessed. I've got a commissioner here that's, that's worked on, on patrol for a long time. And, but he worked for a municipality. They had, you know, four people running the shift, but I got a question. If you got in a bind on one side of your town, what's the close, how long it take for somebody to come over and help you?
Of course, then we had university there. Of course, then we had university there as well.
Mm-hmm.
Back in the day, whenever you guys used to come back and stuff, it took a little while because you were generally always south.
And like I said, we're, we answered a call the other night, and I hated to hear this from an officer, but he was telling the truth. He was, he told dispatch that he was 25 minutes away from a disturbance.
Wow.
And there's, there's a couple of problems with that. There's one of, you're getting of not there. Yes, that's, that's where we're, he just reminded me. We're going to try to break it down, too, with this manpower, to where we've actually got six districts. So we can break up some districts, so we can keep people in areas that's going to get there quicker and closer. That's, yeah.
And divided up where the most calls are.
Divided, right, divided up. That's, that's true. Where we've got the most calls and everything.
Most heavily populated and...
And, you know, some, some of the heavily populated, believe it or not, is, is, is not as bad as the way off in the middle of nowhere is the rural. It seems like, like I said, that county road, it's off in the middle of nowheres, but now there's houses all around. But that's where you're, that's somehow how we wind up in the calls. So that's, I mean, like I said, I can go on and on, but y'all have heard the same thing over and over.
So Terry, with, with the budget that you guys have presented us, with obviously some add-ons in there, you know, if we looked at possibly pulling some of that away, your priority is your officers. That's what you are really concentrating on this year, is adding the four, five officers is y'all's biggest priority this year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You prefer going one investigator?
Yeah, the one investigator, yeah.
Four patrol and then one investigator.
Yeah. I weighed it out, and Greenville, we're running, we're running about the same amount of investigators as Greenville is. And you know how the Greenville population's growing and how big our population is growing. And we're, we've got to have investigators for these, these major crimes.
So Nobby was making reference earlier to something that's going on. They're trying to get together. Is that included with these heads?
The task force? We're, no, that's, that's something that we're trying to put together with, you know, we spoke with county judge, but it'll be something that's a later date with the commissioners and trying to get that working, which is a task force. Collin County has them and stuff that strictly focus on child abuse, child cases. And that's, that's something that we're going to have to really, really look at.
Is that a one-person conversation or a 20-person conversation? What do you think?
That's going to be a, that's going to be a...
It's been kind of one-on-one conversation so far.
It's been a one-on-one, but it's, it's going to be a multiple people conversation.
Trying to get buy-in everywhere. It's going slow.
Yeah. We're trying to see who, we're wanting people to, these agencies, to come on board with this and get together as a task, as a task force. And so, you know, trying to, it's the beginning stage and trying to get everybody on the same page is going to take a bit. I want to, we want to get that, that before we start presenting it to y'all. You know, we want to know who all's on board, okay?
But if it goes forward, it'll be a mid-year impact kind of conversation we'll have to have.
Yes, could be.
Well, I think COVID is going to be determined later in history that it really devastated our families and kids, not only in the loss of lives that we had, but the lives that got destroyed. And the kids, I mean, if you talk to CASA, you talk to Child Advocacy, you talk to Women in Need, their demands are so high because of the family violence. It's all been coming out of COVID. I mean, it just started booming during COVID, particularly the child abuse. And it hasn't slowed up much. And it's a, it's a sad world some of our kids are growing up in right now.
It takes a lot to work these cases, too, and that's, that's just...
Takes a special person to be able to do that.
It takes a lot to work the cases, and you just nearly have to rotate a person off every so often. Because I'm just telling you right now, it, it takes a toll on an individual to work that over and over again and see the monsters. And...
I don't know how you do it.
But the thing is, is we're going to continue, and I'm going to, as long as it's, there's a problem with it and there, it looks like there always will be, it's sad, but, you know, we're going to continue pushing on and trying to modernize, get the equipment, get the people, and go at these people and put these people in the penitentiary where they need to be.
Yet the state will come pick them up.
Yeah. Well, we'll deliver them if we have to.
All right. Any other questions?
Sheriff, in the packet you gave us, I think initially you had been asking for seven positions. It's just kind of narrowing it down to five, kind of just prioritizing that for us?
Yeah, I'd like, no, I'd love to have seven.
Right.
I'd love to have seven. I'm trying to...
But the five is kind of prioritizing.
Five is the minimum.
He's trying to be compassionate.
There you go. We appreciate that.
I've been listening, and I'm just trying to get with the program.
Are these positions all going to be just patrol? And they're not going to be...
Four patrol, one investigator.
There'll be four on patrol, one investigator.
Investigator, but not any sergeants or anything else? Just patrol?
Just patrol.
No, no officers? Okay. Yeah, I knew about the investigator.
Do you have a ballpark number that says I hire one person, it's a total cost of X, you know, time you put out rig and everything?
I don't have that. I don't have that today.
There's a sheet in your packet that shows our...
Like with vehicle, all that stuff?
Yeah.
I mean, with the seven, I kind of, this would just be for uniform and the vehicle lease for the seven, and then the total cost of salary plus benefits was $834,000.
Eight thirty-four for seven.
So Shelby, that works out a little under 120 position, per position, when you count in vehicle and outfitting and all that.
And that's for the seven.
Yeah. So we're going to be five, so it'll be a little less.
So 120 would be about 600.
What are the plans next year for SB 22? Do you have any yet?
I don't have any plans for next year. I don't have any plans until the money's in the bank.
Yeah. Just saying. I mean, I think, can you fill positions with SB 22? I don't remember. You can? Think we can.
Do you?
I do believe we can.
Well, we can buy cars, we can buy equipment. And if we can do that, I just don't know if y'all ponder and think if that's something that y'all might be willing to do.
It would, it might help, but also...
Or at least some of it.
I also don't want, I don't want to wind up, I heard it earlier, if it goes away, we can't take, we can't take law enforcement positions away. We can't, we got to grow.
Yeah. I think we're backing ourselves in a corner hiring people with SB 22.
But you can buy the equipment and all, which would be a pretty good, be a pretty good chunk.
Yeah, we can buy the equipment and things like that, yes. Yeah, but as far as, yeah, I don't...
Yeah, manpower, I don't think that's good.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. But at least we can absorb some of it.
And just for the public's information, the outfitting costs for a new hire would be about 40, you all have worked it out to be about 4,500, just in uniforms, body armor, that sort of thing. And then 17,000 per year for the vehicle. So, so if...
But if they do SB 22 on it, then they have to pay it upfront. Or we could do the lease, but it's better to pay it upfront.
So with SB 22, we could maybe use it to pay for the outfitting part of it and keep the salary in the general budget.
Yes, I'd be willing to work and do that. What I would like to do, if we have SB 22 money, would be to use it for the safety equipment. All our vests expire this year, and we're not qualified, we don't qualify anymore for a 50-50 split with a vest program because we have too many, too much population size. And if you look in a lot of these categories, we've increased our budget on safety equipment such as equipment and uniforms because we're having to buy vests. All our vests are going to go out next year.
Calendar year or fiscal year?
Probably calendar year.
Okay.
So we could use the SB 22 money for that. And then our safety helmets, our ballistic helmets and so forth. They recommend every five years replacing those. Just so happens, they go out next year, too. And the rifle vests that we wear, they're going out next year with a five-year term.
When you say they go out, is that 100% across the board or pieces that go year over year?
Well, the manufacturer won't stand behind the product, and it's hard for us to tell them.
But they all come due at the same time, is the point?
This time it do because of the fact we bought them all at that time, five years ago.
And that's the problem, right? When they all go out, now I can't, I can't go buy, you know, 10 at a time. I've got to go buy 100 because they're all out, cert.
Yes, we could, we can split it up and try to stagger it between, between the fiscal year and the calendar year.
Yep.
And...
It'd just be nice for future years.
Oh, yes. So, and that's a lot of the increase on our operating money, so...
Okay.
If you have any other questions on the operating request, I'll try to, I'll try to answer them today or by the end of the week.
Okay. Thank you, Buddy. Sheriff?
I'm going to finish up with one thing. I've got a, I just want to say that the job that we do out here, I've got to compliment the men that I've got, men and women I've got working for me throughout the jail, all the office staff and all the way, all the way, the investigators and everything. My guys are putting in the time, and they are doing the job. And it is, it's not me. I just happen to be the one that gets to stand in front of y'all and mutter. But I am very, very proud of the people that I have working for me, and that's what's making this county roll. Thank you.
Takes a good leader to have that, though.
Yeah. Thank God for me.
Thanks, Sheriff. Alright, commissioners, that's the ones for today. Do we want to talk about anything else today on the budget? Anybody got any other questions or thoughts or...
The only, the only thing that I would ask, if it's feasible, is as we go through these, keeping up with those things, because most of these today are talking about things that are new. It's scope beyond what we had this last year. Trying to create a list, so to speak, of those items and what they are and what the cost is with them. You know, especially as we start talking about, well, do we want, do we do two? Do we do one? Kind of see where we end up. Because to your point, some of it's regulatory...
Yeah.
With the sheriff, and you don't have options on those. So we need to make sure that we know what we have to do versus what we want to do.
Well, if, you know, I said at the last meeting, I just guessed a month about how much revenue we would get with the new property values, that just a guesstimate of maybe $3.5 million of new money, we ate up a third of it today, probably. And that's without giving raises to anybody else. That's another close to a third of it.
Yeah.
So it's, and then we've got to operate with a deficit budget this year of 2.3 million that we got to absorb. Just trying to get to a balanced budget, we got a challenge to get there. So, and we've had, we've got, we cannot continue to operate with, you know, a $2 and $3 million deficit budget. We got to cut, I'm not saying we have to go all the way, but we got to cut that down. We can't, we can't carry that much. We'll wake up someday, a few years down the road, and we're going to be in trouble.
Agreed.
Alright. Anything else? Alright, entertaining motion to, has the public got any comment? Public out here? Not entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
You got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 3:23. Thank y'all for coming.